The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is now in session. Please be seated.
Good morning, everyone. We welcome members of the public and today's witnesses to today's proceedings. This is the first day of a fortnight of public hearings at which the Royal Commission will be receiving evidence. We have titled these public hearings Hearing Block One. In a moment, I will take appearances for parties who have been granted leave to appear and who wish to appear either for the entirety of Hearing Block One or at least for one day. And then I will invite counsel assisting to make their opening submissions. However, before I do so, I want to mention an important matter of procedure that could arise. Some of the documents we commissioners are receiving from witnesses who are called to give evidence this hearing contain confidential or sensitive information. We've already made certain standing non-publication directions under Section 6D of the Royal Commission's Act that apply to this information. I can make additional directions, adding particular confidential or sensitive information as the hearing progresses when needed. Where we receive a document that contains confidential information, a public version of that document will also be made available with the confidential contents redacted. Importantly, during oral evidence, counsel and the witnesses will try to avoid disclosing anything that is confidential. But if they inadvertently disclose information of that kind, counsel or the commissioners will draw attention to it as soon as possible, and I will direct that it is not to be published or otherwise disclosed any further than it has been. If you hear me say this, it's very important that you abstain from any form of reporting of what was said to anyone else, even via a private message. To do so would be a contravention of our non-publication directions and could be an offence against the Royal Commission's Act. This prohibition is not limited to members of the official media but extends to everyone present here. You who are present here are in a different position to the general public who may be viewing these proceedings via web stream. That's because the web stream is delayed, so that if there's anything of this kind occurs, the web stream can be interrupted to ensure the confidential information is not broadcast. If you are in any doubt about whether something counsel or I have drawn attention to is prohibited from being published, you should check with the commission's solicitors assisting. The commission's non-publication directions prevent not only newspaper, radio and television publications but also publications of any form of disclosure on other media such as Facebook and Twitter, to give just two examples, even via text messages. There have been a number of parties who have been granted leave to appear, and the terms on which that leave has been granted have been communicated to them. The parties granted leave will have been published on our website. Some parties with leave to appear are represented in the room today and others are present via video conferencing. I now invite those granted leave to appear and who are in the hearing room today to announce their appearance and to indicate whether they are appearing for the entire hearing block or just for today.
Commissioners, today I appear with Peter Gray QC, Peter Singleton, Lonya Shebtuhar and Madeline Bridget as counsel assisting the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. There's no one else I gather in present physically here.
Commissioners, I appeal on behalf of Mrs. Gillian Jarison today with my learned friend, Mr. Dyson for the Commonwealth.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome. Thank you. Where parties' representatives are appearing via video link and do not have a representative present here who has already announced their appearance, I now ask those representatives appearing via video link to announce their appearance.
Pleased you, commissioners, my name is Fordham. I appear with my learned friend, Mr. Dyson, for the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think that's all the appearances for now, so I'll just ask Mr. Connor and Mr. Gray then to make opening submissions, please.
Commissioners, today we begin the first of what will be a number of public hearings in this Royal Commission around our nation. Commissioners, I'll address you initially on a number of matters. First, on the letters patent and the terms of reference themselves, and in that regard, the importance of the commission hearing from lived experience witnesses. I'll then make some comments upon the incidence of defence and veteran deaths by suicide. I'll then speak to the overriding purpose of Hearing Block One, which is to listen and to learn. Commissioners, Mr. Gray will then address your commissioners concerning some of the aspects that you'll hear about in Hearing Block One, including in particular what has preceded the Royal Commission. We'll call that the systemic earlier reports. Commissioner, we expect that counsel's assisting opening address will take a little more than an hour. As Commissioner Caldwell has said, Hearing Block One will comprise 10 days of hearing, five days this week, five days next week, and concluding on Friday, the 10th of December. Further public hearings will take place around our nation. It is expected that Public Hearing Blocks Two and Three will take place in Sydney. Public Hearing Block Two will run over 10 days in February. It is expected that Public Hearing Block Three will take place in March next year. As I've said, public hearings will take place around our nation. They'll include places such as Wogga, Townsville and Canberra. May I speak initially to the contribution of the Australian Defence Force to our nation? We acknowledge the great contribution that members of the Australian Defence Forces make to our nation in serving and protecting our country and its citizens. Members of the Australian Defence Forces sacrifice much in service of their country. They forfeit freedoms that others in our country take for granted. They're required to follow orders and are frequently placed in high-risk environments, including in war and operational service, and while in training or on peacetime service. Families who support members of the Australian Defence Force can also be impacted by the member's service, and we acknowledge the contribution they make to our nation. We'd particularly like to note the contribution of Indigenous members of the Australian Defence Force who have proudly served in military uniform before and after the time of Federation, despite early discriminatory provisions that exempted Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island men and other men not of substantial European descent or origin from military service. They've made a major contribution. For many commissioners, service in the Australian Defence Force is an enriching experience from which they progress to other fulfilling roles and careers upon leaving the Australian Defence Forces. Unfortunately, commissioners, for others, this is not their reality. They suffer, and their families and loved ones suffer. May I turn to say something about trauma? Commissioners, you will hear from witnesses in this hearing block and also in subsequent hearing blocks of the impact of trauma in its various forms. To mention a few of the ways in which trauma may be experienced. It may be trauma suffered in connection with a warlike or operational deployments. It may be physical injuries that impair the person and the trauma associated with this. I can no longer do what I could do. I can't be deployed, and it may affect my employment prospects in the long term. It may be trauma in connection with bullying and harassment. It may be trauma suffered in connection with sexual assault and/or other forms of abuse. It may be moral trauma occurring when a deep feeling and sense of betrayal is felt. It may be moral trauma occurring where one is confronted with an ethical or moral dilemma that goes to one's core. Increasingly, there is an appreciation of the significance of the trauma. Commissioners, you will hear from witnesses in this week and next about the significance of trauma. Trauma may be complex. Commissioners, you will also hear from a number of witnesses of the cumulative impact of trauma. I'll now speak to the commissioners' reports. Commissioners, as you well appreciate, you need to present an interim report by August next year, that is, by the 11th of August 2021. Operator, would you please display the Commonwealth letters patent? Commissioners will come to and from the letters patent. Operator, may we go to paragraph or page .0025? Operator, may we display ZA or X or the bottom half of the page, please? Commissioners, you'll see there that you are required to submit to our Governor General an interim report that you consider appropriate, not later than 11 August 2022, focusing on issues requiring urgent or immediate action. And in Roman II, any other matters you consider necessary or you consider should be referred to the interim National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention or the National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention. And, Commissioners, you'll see that ZB refers to the final report, and that is to be submitted to our Governor General not later than 15 June 2023. This is a relatively short time for the task at hand, Commissioners, and the complexity of the subject matter of this inquiry. May I say something very general about suicide? Suicide's a complex phenomenon, involves the interaction of various factors such as neurobiology, personal and family histories, stressful events, socio-cultural environments and many other factors. The contributing factors will vary from person to person. Accordingly, the Royal Commission's scope of inquiry is diverse and complicated. The issues are not amenable to simple solutions. Many strategies must be followed simultaneously. Many improvements may be needed and across a wide range of matters. Please display .0019. Commissioners, .0019 displays the first two terms of 10 terms of reference. Commissioners, I will refer to them as what's shown on this page as Terms 1 and 2. It will proceed, Terms 1 to 9 are really the subject matters of the Royal Commission's inquiry. Commissioner, the Terms of Reference are, of course, the touchstone, the charter, and particularly the tasks that the Royal Commission needs to engage with and explore. If you may go to .0020. One sees there Paragraph C to J. If we may go to Paragraph J of the Terms of Reference, and I'll refer to this generally as Term of Reference 10. Commissioners, you'll see that this is a general or incidental term. That's to the other nine terms. Commissioners, you'll see that the 10th Term of Reference, Paragraph J, has two limbs. The first limb empowers the Royal Commission to address any matter reasonably incidental to a matter referred to in any of the other nine Terms of Reference, that is, Paragraphs A to I. The second limb of the 10th Term of Reference empowers the Royal Commission to address any... empowers the Royal Commissioners to address any matter that you believe is reasonably relevant to your inquiry. May I say something now about the significance of lived experience witnesses to this Royal Commission? Operator, may I go to Paragraph A of the Term of Reference or the first Term of Reference? May I go to .0019? And might you... Now, one sees in that reference to the expression "lived experience" on the third line. So, defence members and veterans who have other lived experience of suicide behaviour or risk factors, including attempted or contemplated suicide, feelings of suicide or poor mental health outcomes. Operator, may I ask you to go to the next page, .0020 or 0020? And may I ask you to go to Paragraph E on that page? That is the fifth Term of Reference. Now, that speaks of protective and rehabilitative factors for defence members and veterans who have lived experience of suicide behaviour or risk factors. Again, the significance of lived experience to this Royal Commission's inquiry. May I take you, operator, might you display Paragraph F, please? This is the sixth Term of Reference. It concerns any systemic issues in the current availability and effectiveness of support services for and engagement with families and others. Affected by a defence and veteran suicide by death, that involves lived experience, who have supported a defence member or veteran with lived experience of suicide behaviour or risk factors. May I ask you, operator, to display Paragraph G? I won't read out Paragraph G or the sixth Term of Reference, sorry, the seventh Term of Reference, but one sees reference again to the lived experience of suicide behaviour or risk factors. Now, I wish to say something about the expression or the label "lived experience". Commissioners, you well appreciate that the lived experience of people is very important to this Royal Commission. You well appreciate, Commissioners, the significance of it to this commission's inquiry. It's, of course, a label, "lived experience", for what lies underneath it, needing a label to describe something, to convey it to other people. But it's a complex, detailed idea. The expression "lived experience" recognises the individual and their personal experience. It recognises the interpersonal and family members and carers who have experience in supporting a person. It recognises that we are social beings. It recognises our personal connections. It recognises our family and friends. It recognises the significance of the day-to-day. It recognises the personal knowledge gained through direct, first-hand involvement. That's why this lived experience evidence is so significant to this Royal Commission. I do not refer to those things just as the only matters that are within the concept that idea of lived experience. Lived experience is a label for many, many things. To use a generality sometimes used by lawyers, the expression "lived experience" or the label "lived experience" pays cognisance to. It recognises the whole context. We'll be looking at the whole context. Indeed, the ninth Term of Reference uses the expression "context". We will, Commissioners, in looking at in particular Terms of Reference 1, 5, 6 and 7, be listening to those who have suffered or are suffering, those who have lost a loved one to suicide, those with lived experience of suicidal behaviour, those with lived experience of the risk factors, including attempted or contemplated suicide, feelings of suicide or poor mental outcomes, to use the expressions that's used in the Terms of Reference themselves. May I say something about, to the people generally, that is, veterans, members of the Defence Forces, their families, people who have lived experience in that area? The Royal Commission wishes to hear from the people. We ask that defence members and veterans who have had or present experience and concerns come forward and tell the commission of your lived experiences. The Royal Commission has counsellors that can aid and assist the lived experience people and others who wish to come forward and engage with the Royal Commission. Your voice needs to be heard. Your stories will throw light on the systemic issues that the Royal Commission needs to explore. Our counsellors will put you in contact with appropriate ongoing care and support if you require that. As I've said, people who've lost loved ones and are bereaving the loss of those loved ones are people with lived experience. Your voices need to be heard. Your story, again, will throw light on the systemic issues that the Royal Commission needs to explore. People who care for and love people, who are enduring difficulties, concerns, are people with lived experience. You will feel and know things on the ground, as it were, from day-to-day living of your lives. Come forward and tell the commission of your lived experience. People with lived experience are very much experts. Indeed, some of the so-called experts themselves speak of people with lived experience as being very much experts, experts by experience. Commissioners, may I say something about cross-examination of lived experience witnesses? Commissioners, cross-examination of lived experience witnesses would not generally be seen as appropriate. In any event, cross-examination of lived experiences witnesses should not proceed in Hearing Block One. It will depend, Commissioners, on what issues are explored and taken further when any government department or other person might have occasion to apply to cross-examine a lived experience witness. Operator, may I take you to, may I ask you to display page, Paragraph C of the Term of Reference, the third Term of Reference, on .0019? And, sorry, the next page, my apologies. Operator, might you explode or display Paragraph C? Now, this is a significant Term of Reference. One will see it concerns culture, culture where, culture within the Australian Defence Force, culture in the Department of Defence, culture in the Department of Veterans Affairs. It concerns the impact of culture. It concerns the impact of culture on defence members and veterans. Concerning what? Concerning their physical and mental wellbeing. May I turn, Commissioners, to the incidence of defence and veteran deaths by suicide? I'll speak for a few minutes about this, Commissioners. It concerns the emerging information about numbers of defence members and veterans who have died by suicide. Commissioners, for many years now, veterans' organisations have disputed the number of deaths by suicide by the Commonwealth or announced by the Commonwealth through the Department of Defence and Veterans Affairs Department. Their concern was that the official numbers were low and not reflective of what they were seeing on the ground. May I say this seems very much to be the case? Even now, there remains uncertainty around the numbers of defence members and veterans who have died by suicide. It is obviously important to the Royal Commission to attend to and properly ascertain how many defence members and veterans have tragically died by suicide over the years. We expect there will be an emerging story here. The Department of Veterans Affairs, I'll use the expression DVA, reported that as Act 31 March 2016, in the 10 years to 31 December 2015, so that's 2005 to 2015, that the DVA had determined claims in relation to 83 deaths by suicide. In 2016, DVA commissioned the Australian Institute of Health and Wellbeing to monitor death by suicide amongst ADF members and veterans. I'll refer to the Australian Institute of Health and Wellbeing as AIHW. It is a statutory authority established in 1987 under the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare Act 1987. Its role in this connection was to provide meaningful information and statistics on health and welfare issues for the benefit of the Australian people. The governing board of the AIHW is accountable to the Parliament of Australia through the Minister of Health. As I've said, in two thousand and sixteen, the DVA commissioned the AWA to monitor death by suicide amongst ADF members and veterans. And there's been an emerging story concerning the numbers. The AIHW initially looked at deaths by suicide amongst serving and ex-serving Australian Defence Force personnel occurring, those deaths occurring between two thousand and one and two thousand and fourteen. They included veterans who had served at least one day since two thousand and one. So in that particular analysis, there would be very few Vietnam veterans, for example, as they were very few veterans still in service as at two thousand and one. AIHW has prepared four, released four annual reports. And it's amongst members of the Defence Force at the time of their death by suicide, members of the Australian Defence Force reserves and ex-serving members of the Australian Defence Force. But, so, now, the first three of the AIHW reports included only ADF members who had served at least one day since two thousand and one. So if you'd finished service before one January two thousand and one, you are not the subject of that study. The two thousand and twenty-one AIHW report, released in October, has taken that back further. It's looked at people who had served since one January nineteen eighty-five. One day of service since one January nineteen ninety-five. It still looked at deaths only in the period from one January, or that occurred after one January. So it does not look at deaths in the nineteen nineties or deaths in nineteen eighties. It also means that it does not look at anyone who's not had a day of service after one January nineteen eighty-five. So that would include, I expect, many Vietnam veterans. The initial AIHW report on Defence and Veteran Death by Suicide was issued on the thirtieth November two thousand and sixteen. It reported two hundred and ninety-two deaths by suicide for that period, two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen. Again, it included only those people who had had one day of service after one January two thousand and one. This was followed by a brief summary report issued on the thirtieth of June two thousand and seventeen and a more detailed report issued on nineteen January two thousand and eighteen. That next report referred to three hundred and twenty-two deaths by suicide. The second annual report issued on the twenty-ninth of November two thousand... Sorry, I need to correct that, it was three twenty-five deaths by suicide in that report. That's the one I previously referred to. The second annual AIHW report issued on twenty-nine November two thousand and nineteen reported four hundred and nineteen deaths by suicide for the period from two thousand and one to two thousand and seventeen. The third annual report issued on the ninth of October twenty twenty reported four hundred and sixty-five deaths by suicide for the period from two thousand and one continuing to two thousand and eighteen. As I've said, for its most recent report issued in October twenty twenty-one, the AIHW has taken expanded cohort. Members who had served at least one day since one January nineteen eighty-five. That report was issued on the... Not the correct date. The latest report expands on this earlier work, as I've said, by including at least one day of the ADF service since one January nineteen eighty-five. This is due to an improvement in the availability of information, I understand, provided by the Department of Defence to AIHW. This more than doubled the population under consideration. For this expanded cohort, there were now recorded one thousand two hundred and seventy-three suicides reported between two thousand and one and two thousand and nineteen. Now, the AIHW sets draw on a range of data sets. So, sorry, we understand these include four sources. The first one is what is referred to in the systems as fact of death information, and that comes from the National Death Index. What is next is what is referred to in the systems as cause of death information from the National Mortality Database. And also information from what is known as the Defence Suicide Database. The fourth, we understand, is information from the Department of Defence's payroll systems, or payroll information. Now, there may be more data sets that can be drawn upon to improve the information available concerning Defence Force members and veterans' deaths by suicide. We must acknowledge that the AIHW is reporting on serving and ex-serving Australian Defence Force members' suicide monitoring. And suicide and self-harm monitoring in general appears to be innovative when compared with what is currently being done in other countries. We consider, from what we've understood so far, that it's likely to be the current figure of one thousand two hundred and seventy-three deaths by suicide reported in the AIHW's most recent report is likely to be in underestimation of the number of deaths by suicide of Defence members and veterans. We also have the interaction with the coronial system and how that works, and we'll be exploring that in due course in this Royal Commission. Our research group within the Royal Commission will seek to enhance the availability and quality of data to further enhance the monitoring of suicide amongst serving and former members of the Australian Defence Force. The Royal Commission will endeavour to work with the ADA and leading research institutions to explore how additional data sets, such as, say, police incidents data, emergency department in hospitals data, health service data, can be used to provide a better and more timely picture of the incidence of death by suicide and self-harm. It's expected that perhaps what may emerge from this material in relation to Defence members and veterans may also even help the community generally. Just may I make a short comment about the healthy soldier effect? If any comparative analysis is to be done or comparison to be made between, on the one hand, deaths by members of the Defence Force and, on the other hand, the national position, one must have, keep in mind, the healthy soldier effect. Witnesses will speak of this. Men and women are selected to join the Defence Forces. They are specially selected. The healthy soldier effect may well have an impact on the comparability of the incidence of death by suicide between those who serve and the population generally. May I now say... So Commissioners, it may not make sense, good sense, to simply compare the incidence of death by suicide by serving Defence members with the population generally and then say, all is okay, the numbers are better in the serving population? No, we have to look deeper and in a more nuanced way at that. May I now say something about women in the Australian Defence Force? Commissioners, you will hear this week from experts who have undertaken both, and I emphasise qualitative, and also quantitative research into the treatment of women in the ADF, including research into the incidence and prevalence of sexual assault and other forms of abuse towards women. Commissioners, you'll also hear from a lived experience witness who lost her sister to suicide. That raises us a little. The AIHW two thousand and twenty-one report says this. The age-adjusted rate of suicide for ex-serving females was a hundred and twenty-seven percent, or two point two seven times higher when compared with Australian females. So even using, discarding the healthy soldier effect, we have a significant impact there, a difference between the figures in the general population and the figures for ex-serving women of the Australian Defence Forces. Two point two seven times higher. The experience of female Defence members and veterans requires specific attention in this inquiry. It's to better understand the systemic issues faced by women. Commissioners, you well appreciate, every death by suicide is a tragic event. A death by suicide ripples far and extends deeply into the circles of persons around them. Now, may I turn, Commissioners, now, to speak very generally about the broad objectives of Hearing Block One and of the overarching purpose of this? It's intended to be wide, not so deep, Hearing Block One. We'll hear many, many things, Commissioners, about many, many significant matters. The overarching purpose of Hearing Block One is to listen and to learn. To hear from what lived experience witnesses have to say. To hear from what some of the support organisations are able to tell us. To hear from some practitioners who care for Defence members and veterans. To see what issues emerge. May I now speak shortly as to the broad pattern for each of the days of hearing in Hearing Block One? Commissioners, at the start of each day, we intend to give a brief overview of the evidence we expect to be able to call on that day and from whom it will be called. Commissioners, in Hearing Block One, the documentary evidence relating to a particular witness or a group of witnesses will generally be tendered at the time the witness is called to give oral testimony. Commissioners, you'll be hearing, as I've said, from witnesses with lived experience. Commissioners, we're hoping to call a lived experience witness on, I think, nine of the ten mornings of this Hearing Block One. Commissioners, we acknowledge the challenge that this may present to these witnesses. And we respect and acknowledge and pay tribute to their courage in coming forward and being able to give evidence. We also know, Commissioners, that some with lived experience may not be yet ready to come forward and give their voice, let the Commission hear their voice and speak to the Commission. They may do so at a later date. The Commission will, of course, welcome that. Commissioners, you'll also be hearing in Hearing Block One from people who have worked with and tried to help in various ways members of the Defence Forces and veterans in their lived experience. May I mention simply one person who's perhaps devoted his life to this? Professor Alexander McFarlane and his exploration into the significance of trauma. He's a world leader in this area. He's been at the forefront worldwide of an appreciation of the significance of trauma. Commissioners, you'll also hear from panels of support organisations. Their efforts to support Defence members and veterans cannot be understated. Commissioners, you'll hear from the first panel of support organisations this afternoon. Operator, may I take you to, ask you to display dot zero zero one nine? Sorry, zero zero dot two O? And take you to, ask you to, display paragraph D. Now, Commissioners, this is a task, a term of reference, the fourth term of reference. It concerns the role of non-government organisations, including ex-service organisations, in providing relevant services and support for Defence members, veterans, their families and others. So it's a specific term of reference. We will be hearing extensively from support organisations, particularly in a panel way, that is, a number of people from various support organisations entering the witness box and giving evidence together, as it were. Mr Gray will address you, Commissioners, on the panels of witnesses associated with support organisations shortly. In this Hearing Block, Commissioners, you will hear from five panels of support organisation witnesses. Commissioners, Mr Gray will also address you generally on the inquiries that have preceded this Royal Commission, particularly the most recent inquiry. Before turning to Mr Gray, may I say something very generally and briefly about issues? We recognise that we're at the early stages of the Royal Commission's work. We recognise that things need to be done quickly. We need to explore and find and locate and identify issues. We've not formed any concluded view at this stage of what the issues are, let alone how they should be resolved. We recognise, of course, that there are many issues and all of them are likely to be complex, challenging and personal. To identify these issues, we're required to listen to many people, particularly the lived experience witnesses who come forward and tell the Commission their stories. From those stories, we are confident that we'll be able to identify systemic matters, issues of significance that the Royal Commission needs to explore deeply. Later in the Royal Commission, there'll be opportunities to dive deeply into the particular issues as they emerge. They're very likely to involve the processes of government agencies. There may be issues of legislative questions that arise. We'll need to be looking at clinical issues. And I say that in the broadest possible sense. There'll be deep dives into significant matters of research, how things are now emerging about the management... How things are now emerging about the management, dealing with trauma. How can people be improved, their lives be improved as a result of the interaction of them with their families, with their people around them, with clinicians of various kinds? So as I've said, Commissioner, this is Hearing Block One. It's to identify what issues might be. We've identified many, of course, already. It's to inform planning of the future of this Royal Commission. We will learn from the perspectives, particularly these perspectives, the lived experience witnesses. In saying this, Commissioners, I am, and we will be, presenting the product of the labours of the solicitors assisting the Commission and also of the, the other groups within the Royal Commission, the researchers and analysts. Commissioners, Mr Gray will now address you.
Thank you, Commissioners. As Mr Connor said, I will briefly address two topics. Earlier systemic reviews or inquiries and their reports, and briefly the panels of support organisations we intend to call over Hearing Block One. Then I'll finish by giving a brief overview of the evidence we plan to call today. Firstly, the previous inquiries and reviews that we're terming systemic. So far, the Royal Commission research staff have identified 57 inquiries or reviews as relevant to the terms of reference, and those reviews have collectively made more than 700 recommendations. It appears around 20 of these reports have met with formal public responses from government. What do we mean by key systemic reviews or inquiries? Since the year 2000 in particular, multiple reviews and inquiries have examined matters related to Defence Force members and veteran wellbeing, mental health and suicide prevention, as well as the institutional systems designed to respond to these issues at a general level. This is what we mean by systemic reviews. In a moment, I'll identify the key ones in the recent 12 years that we're permitted to tender into evidence at this stage. At this stage, we're inhibited by parliamentary privilege in the use we can make of parliamentary materials and reports. And we have to look into the scope there might be in referring to those in later hearings, but for now, we won't be tendering them. That said, there is a set of responses to one important parliamentary review that is separately published by government, and we can tender that one, the Government Response to the Constant Battle Report. As I mentioned on Friday, in some future hearings, we will conduct detailed inquiries into some individual cases. That is, some individual tragedies where veterans have taken their own lives or defence members have taken their own lives. And in such hearings, we'll be seeking to tender all relevant available material, including inquest and inquiry reports, and we'll be closely scrutinising the actions or inactions of officials from government agencies such as Defence and DVA. And we'll seek to examine government officials where that is relevant to the inquiry. On Friday, when speaking about lived experience witnesses who are giving their impressions in Hearing Block One of the tragedies they've lived through, I submitted to you, Commissioners, that people giving these accounts should not be cross-examined. On social media, there's been some misunderstanding of what I said and what I meant. I only meant to refer to lived experienced, lived experience witnesses not being subjected to cross-examination. In future hearings, as I've said, we do intend to direct searching questions to government officials, including officials in Defence or DVA. However, that's not the task before us in this Hearing Block. As we've mentioned, this Hearing Block is intended to provide a broad view of the landscape of issues from the perspectives of non-government, non-government witnesses. Operator, please display the following list entitled Reports of Systemic Reviews. It is a tender bundle of 14 documents. And I'll just ask the operator to track through to the second page. And I'm intending, Commissioners, in a moment, after I've just explained these documents, to make a collective tender of the documents in the list, rather than going separately through each document. The reports of these key systemic reviews and inquiries provide important information about the issues of concern likely to be contributing to Defence and Veteran suicide rates. I'll just mention some of them now, and I'll be returning to some of them in a minute. Operator, kindly bring up the first page of the first document in the list, which is the Dunst Report, INQ double zero double zero triple zero one two triple zero. Commissioners, the Dunst Report was a landmark report, as you can see from the title, which will appear on the screen shortly, I trust. Its focus was review of mental health care in the ADF and transition through discharge. But that said, Professor Dunst's report investigated and made findings on other related matters, including the effect of ADF culture, a topic we'll return to many times, in erecting barriers to help-seeking, and the role of family in supporting defence members and veterans, especially through transition. Already, Commissioners, you can see three key topics emerging. Culture, transition and support, including but not limited to, mental health support. Operator, please, we'll skip the Australian Human Rights Commission, which has made a number of reports in this list, because I'll be mentioning them later in connection with some witnesses we're going to call in Hearing Block One. But we'll go to the third report in the list. And operator, please display the first or cover page of document INQ double zero double zero triple zero one one two nine five. Commissioners, while that document's coming up, I'll just say something briefly about it. There's the cover page. It's the Australian Government Department of Defence's Pathway to Change: Evolving Defence Culture, a Strategy for Cultural Change and Reinforcement of 2012. This is a very important document. I'm going to ask the operator to go to PDF page nine now, and you'll see from a schematic there that builds on a series of reviews. If we go down the page, please, operator, under the heading, you'll see a schematic. Going to PDF page nine, please. Thank you, yes, that's it. No, the one you had a minute ago, please, operator. You just had it momentarily up on the screen, PDF page nine. Well, no matter, but we'll, thank you. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you, operator. Now, in this figure, you can see, Commissioners, reviews into defence culture on which this Pathway to Change document builds. You can see that there have been six topics dealt with down the left-hand column of the schematic. And on personal conduct, under the heading Reviews into Defence Culture, there's a reference to the ORM review. That's also a review known as the DLA Piper Report. And that was a very important review into ADF personal conduct, allegations of abuse and the like. And it went into numerous cases of abuse within the ADF. And then you can see under that review, alcohol use, social media incidents and complaints, and then treatment of women. And there's a reference there to Broderick, that's Miss Elizabeth Broderick AO. Phase one of the review of the Australian Human Rights Commission, led by, Miss Broderick's work was a review into the treatment of women at the Australian Defence Force Academy. And the second phase was a broader review into the treatment of women in the ADF. And then finally, a review on women's employment pathways. This is a very substantial body of work, and it went into this Pathway to Change document in 2012. I'll come in a minute to the question of why. Why is it that the suicide rates for Defence veterans have still remained so terribly and tragically high, notwithstanding all of this close scrutiny, these recommendations and these attempts at cultural change? Operator, please take down that document, and we'll now go to the document INQ double zero double zero triple zero one triple zero one. Australian National Audit Office Administration of Mental Health Initiatives to Support Younger Veterans. The ANAO, the Australian National Audit Office, has audited the attempts by Defence and DVA to implement various of the recommendations that we've already adverted to here. And this is an important report into recommendations and initiatives flowing from the Dunst Report in particular. There's another in the list, which I'll come to in a moment. Operator, please now display the cover page of INQ double zero double zero triple zero one one four seven one. That is the separately published Government Response I adverted to a little while ago. It's a report, or rather, a response to a parliamentary report which we can't tender. It's a very important report, The Constant Battle Suicide by Veterans. This response is a response in 2017. And I'll come back to some of the other reports in the list in a moment, but we'll just finally, before leaving the list as such, go to the ANAO's Audit of Defence's Implementation of Cultural Reform 2021. Operator, please display INQ double zero double zero triple zero one one two oh nine. I'm going to mention some of these reports more specifically in a moment, but I'm going to, by reference to the entire list I displayed earlier, Commissioners, tender each of the documents referred to in the list. I tender those documents.
They'll be allocated the next exhibit number. Thank you.
Thank you. As the Royal Commission's website notes, one of these key reports was produced by the National Mental Health Commission in 2017. And this was under the chief executorship of Commissioner Brown, our own Commissioner Brown, when she was chief executive of that commission. I'll just ask the operator to display that report, INQ triple zero, a big pardon, double zero double zero triple zero one one four double eight. The National Mental Health Commission's report of 2017. Thank you, operator. During Hearing Block One, Commissioners, the authors of several of the reports will be called to give evidence. I've mentioned Miss Broderick. I'll now ask the operator to display the first of the Australian Human Rights Commission's report, reports that are in the list, INQ double zero double zero triple zero one zero nine double seven. This is the Commission's report on the review into the treatment of women at the Australian Defence Force Academy Phase One, that was in 2011. I won't ask the operator to display the others, but under Miss Broderick's leadership of these reviews and then an audit of these reviews, Miss Broderick extended the Commission's work into the treatment of women in the ADF more broadly. And then, that was in 2012, and then conducted an audit, which reported in 2014. Miss Broderick, we intend to call, to give evidence later in the Hearing Block, and the expectation is that she'll be giving her evidence with her colleague on these reviews, Miss Alexandra Shahadi. Operator, please now display the first page of the Productivity Commission's, well, that is, the cover page of the Productivity Commission's report, INQ double zero double zero triple zero one double two double nine. Commissioners, as you well know, the Productivity Commission's report was a seminal piece of work which will inform your approach. And it is a work of Commissioners Robert Fitzgerald and Richard Spencer. Operator, please now go to the Table of Contents, which begins at page, that is, PDF page six. And if we can just linger for a few seconds on each of the pages from six through to 10 while I carry on talking, that would be good. As can be seen from the structure of this report, from the Table of Contents, it's a very detailed root and branch review of supports for veterans. And not just supports for veterans, but the broader context relevant to any parts focused upon mental health and suicide prevention. It includes detailed examination of military service and the veteran community, the system of supports, appropriate objectives for that system and design principles that should inform it, prevention of injury and illness, rehabilitation, transition to civilian life, including, Commissioners, a recommendation for a joint transition authority, which the government announced in October 2020 has been established within Defence. And to go on, the scheme and processes relating to liability assessment for compensation, claims management and reviews of decisions, governance and funding, advocacy at both the individual and policy levels, reform of compensation arrangements, streamlining of claims processes, healthcare, mental health, suicide prevention, data and research, and integration and translation of these matters into a new system of supports. Operator, please now display, we'll leave the Table of Contents at that point, thank you very much, and please now display a different document, the cover page of INQ double zero double zero triple zero one one five eight four. Going to this next report, which is the final report I'll address in this manner, Commissioners. As mentioned by the Chair in your opening remarks on Friday, Dr Bernadette Boss has provided a broad-ranging report very recently, which is of enormous assistance to this inquiry and my submission. Dr Boss commissioned research as well, which included quantitative research by the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare. I won't ask the operator to display that, but that's the last item on the page. Also qualitative work was done, and a literature review was commissioned, which we'll be drawing upon. Staff of the Royal Commission, in short, are making good use of the extensive work of these previous inquiries. And we're seeking not to duplicate their efforts, but to build upon them. As the work of the Royal Commission progresses, additional evidence will be collected. Previous research and reports will be analysed, and information may be brought to notice and new research commissioned. It isn't being assumed that we can rely on the work of these previous inquiries and reports. Careful independent scrutiny is going to be given to those matters. But in an appropriate manner, these reports will contribute to the body of knowledge being developed to fulfil the Royal Commission's terms of reference by assisting new Commissioners. The skill and dedication of the authors of these reports cannot be doubted. The skill and dedication of the authors of these reports cannot be doubted, and, to my mind at least, when one goes through them, their recommendations appear well-grounded and worthwhile. However, the number of inquiries undertaken and the recommendations made, all designed to help improve institutional responses to Defence Force service and veteran transition to civilian life and related matters, it prompts, all of this prompts a question: why does the incidence of mental ill health suicidality and veterans' death by suicide remain so high? Some of the inquiries tended to focus on particular policy questions and operational matters or particular events, and to that extent, they will have resulted in recommendations that were responsive to the subject matter and not the entire system by and through which people become members of the ADF, serve as members, transition after service to civilian life, and by which their families are brought on that journey. The inquiries were constrained in their ability to make recommendations for system-wide change, but this is not an entirely satisfactory explanation for why the problem remains so acute. There are likely to be other factors that have impeded reform, and this topic and this question should be explored with relevant government witnesses in a hearing early next year. Questions arise about accountability, responsibility, and action. It may well be crucial for this Royal Commission to identify and address the root causes of what appears to be glacial progress or even stasis in this area. Doing so could well be critical to ensuring that the implementation of the needed reforms, whatever they may be, at the end of this Royal Commission, is to be promptly achieved, and ensuring that the recommendations of this Royal Commission are not simply sidelined with mere lip service or token measures in the future. Mr Connor has already addressed you on the data available from the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare concerning Defence and veteran suicides. There are significant limitations in the data and questions about evolution of that data, and need to scrutinise the available analysis. But whatever limitations there might be, it's plain there is great cause for concern. The Institute's fourth annual report in September 2012, which Mr Connor's already mentioned, and which is publicly available on the website, aihw.gov.au, states in addition to the points that Mr Connor made, that ex-serving males and females had a higher rate of suicide than the general Australian population, and then, when one does an age-specific adjustment, the age-specific suicide rates for ex-serving males and females were higher than the Australian population for all age groups under fifty, and for those under thirty, the suicide rate was three times higher for ex-serving females, and almost twice as high for ex-serving males. Whatever may be the reasons for the persistence of the risk factors contributing to the high rates of Defence and veteran suicides, the Royal Commission presents a unique opportunity to take a whole-of-system approach to its inquiry. Commissioners, you should thoroughly consider what was learned in the early inquiries and what they recommended. They provide a rich resource from which to start this inquiry. They also present many recommendations that are candidates for urgent action. Where necessary and appropriate, Commissioners, you may determine whether any such matters will be considered for inclusion in your interim report next year. Several key themes recur across the reports of previous inquiries, and I already mentioned that broad categorisation of culture transition, and then, after transition, entitlements and supports, and running right through those is the question of the adequacy and appropriateness of supports, including mental health care. I'll go into the themes that recur across these reports in a little more detail. There are consistent patterns in approach and repeated recommendations for change on matters that include and are not limited to aspects of ADF and DVA, Department of Veterans Affairs culture, supports for Australian Defence Force members and veterans during and after service, mental ill health and wellbeing experienced by Australian Defence Force members and veterans, allegations of abuse and inappropriate behaviour in the ADF, support for Defence members during transition from their Defence service to civilian life, the complexity and inconsistency in claims processes, and the multiplicity of legislation that underpins the claims systems administration, access to and the adequacy of service and support infrastructure, including the intersection between government and non-government providers, and governance and accountability measures to support reforms. Commissioners, I'll now move to my second topic, which is briefer, and I'll just say a few things about what we intend by way of evidence across Hearing Block One from support organisations. The Royal Commission is enjoined by the terms of reference paragraph D to consider ex-service organisations in providing relevant services and support for Defence members, veterans, their families and others, and to consider them in certain other ways. There's a rich, diverse, and extraordinarily numerous constellation of ex-service organisations and other organisations that support Defence members, veterans and their families. We are intending to call representatives from a selection of support organisations in five panels across the hearing block to give their perspectives from the ground about what are the key issues of concern to them, and of course, what programmes they provide, and importantly, what could be done better. I'll give a brief outline of what we may hear from these sessions. Today, day one, we have our first support organisation panel, and it is a panel of smaller support organisations based in Queensland. There's representation on that panel of providers that provide special programmes with a focus on holistic wellbeing, and those programmes seem able to address quite effectively difficult issues connected with trauma and social connection. In addition, one of those support organisations is specialist advocate when it comes to dealing with the claims processes administered by DVA. Now, there are host of issues on preparation for life after service and on supporting people during their transition from ADF service, and you can expect Commissioners to hear quite a lot on that topic. On day three, we'll have our second support organisation panel, which has a broader focus on family supports. The importance of family and maintaining health and supportive relationships for the Defence member and veteran, and how best to support families of Defence members and veterans are very important topics for this Royal Commission's inquiry, and we acknowledge there are great challenges in this area and great complexities. On day five, we'll have our third support organisation panel. It's a selection of support organisations which support and advocate for veterans, including in their dealings with DVA. It's already evident that the stresses of dealing with DVA, in particular for people who separate from Defence in certain ways, for example, by reason of injuries or conditions, these will be key issues for the Royal Commission. Is it very clear a need, in my submission, to give critical attention to DVA claims processes and its culture, and the legislation itself that DVA administers? On day six, we'll have our fourth support organisation panel. That panel comprises four of Australia's large support organisations. On day seven, we'll have our fifth support organisation panel. There are additional smaller support organisations being called on that day who have innovative holistic programmes. The view from the ground is, of course, not limited to the perspectives of the support organisations. As we mentioned on Friday, we'll be calling a great deal of lived experience evidence as well. Lastly, Commissioners, the witnesses for today. As Mr Connor said, at the start of each day, we intend to give a brief overview like this of the evidence we expect to be able to call that day. Our first witness is Miss Nicola Jamison, who will be giving lived experience evidence. Now, Miss Jamison is also an expert in her own right in moral trauma and related matters, and she's completed her PhD, which will be awarded, I understand, on the 7th of December 2021. However, for today, Miss Jamison will only give lived experience evidence, and her evidence in her field of expertise will go over to another day to be given separately. Next, after Miss Jamison, and after a short break, we will call our first panel of experts. Our first panel of experts comprises Associate Professor Ben Waddam, Associate Professor James Connor, and Dr Zach E Seidler. This is a panel of sociologists. Dr Seidler's also a psychologist, and all members have other areas of interest and expertise, but there's a sociological perspective presented by this panel, in particular focusing on that first broad theme I mentioned of culture within the ADF, and such related topics as masculinity, the effects of masculinity, the potential effects it can have on a tribalistic culture within ADF, and the effects that can have, not only within the ADF but in broader society, and whether there are connections between these things and the potential for heightened risk of suicide. Operator, please display the next list of documents, and I propose Commissioners to tender these documents in the list without displaying each of them. It is the list for Expert Panel One. Thank you. Now, that is the entire list, it's just a one-page list, and Commissioners, I tender the documents in that list.
Thank you, Mr Gray. They'll be accepted and allocated the next exhibit number.
Thank you, Chair. And in the afternoon today, we'll have our first support organisation panel, the one comprising Queensland-based support organisations. The panelists will be Mr Michael Stone of Veterans Care Association, who's the Programme Director for T-More Awakening, an innovative programme provided by Veterans Care Association; next, Mr John Williams, who is Senior Advocate at Veteran Support Centre North Queensland; next, Mr Nick Forster-Jones, who is Chief Executive Officer of Digger's Rest; and next, two officers from Veteran Health Association, Mr Christian Lind, Managing Director, and Dr Michelle Dunbar, Programme Director. Operator, please display the final list of documents, and again, I'll tender all the documents described in the list. It's the Support Organisation Panel One tender bundle list.
Thank you, Mr Gray. That's also accepted, and will be allocated the next exhibit number.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Sheptuah will now call our first witness.
Commissioners, I call Mrs Nicola Jamison.